... stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
All righty, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll start this evening. We have a public hearing. It's a road opening petition for Mr. Gregory P. Nickel and his attorney, Mr. Getty, is here.
Members of the board, Mr. Bennett, Mr. Beeman, my name is Gorman Getty. I'm here on behalf of Gregory P. Nickel. Mr. Nickel owns property just outside of Lonaconing, which is bordered by a 10-foot alley. The alley appears on plats but has never been accepted as a public way or road in the county. We are filing a petition to formally open the alley as it borders on his property, which is off North Rockwell Street, Rockwood Street. And we would ask consideration by the board of this petition. It has been submitted to the county, has been reviewed. We have not received any adverse comments. It is our intention to, should the board sign the order to open, that we would in turn file an additional petition to close the alley permanently.
Great. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. All righty. Item number two is a constant yield hearing. Mr. Bennett?
Good evening, Commissioners. Bear with me a second. I'll move down here a second. Change the screen. Good evening, Commissioners. As you guys know, as we do the budget every year, many years, we have what's called the constant yield hearing. We ran an ad in the Cumberland Times News back on February, or March 14th, to display this message and these rates. State law says that they calculate what's called the constant yield. That's the tax rate necessary to give us the exact same taxes we collected last year. They send that to every county as they start the budget process. If we're going to have any rate that exceeds that calculated constant yield tax rate, we're required by law to do an ad in the paper, have a hearing on it. Tonight would be the hearing on that. There's a lot of small numbers up on that screen, and I won't bore you with going through all of them, but I will talk about just a few things. Our assessments as a whole are up 1.9% from last year. Based on these rates and our current and proposed tax rates, we're going to collect approximately $400,000 more tax than last year. We will note, you can see the two highlighted columns there, current tax rate and proposed tax rate. Current one is the one that's currently enacted. The proposed one is what you guys are considering for this year's budget. I want to make very clear that the proposed tax rate, not one of them is in excess of the current tax rate. In fact, all the municipality rates are actually lower than last year's rate. The unincorporated rate, or the excluding towns, as it says there, is the same as last year's rate. So while we are running the ad, you guys are not changing any tax rates. So we just wanted to kind of point that out. Really, tonight is a public hearing, so it'd be a chance for any public comment on these rates that we'll move forward with in our budget. You guys can certainly consider these rates as we continue to move forward. So Commissioners, unless you have any questions or concerns, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public hearing.
So, oh, go ahead.
I was going to ask very briefly, just for clarity as well. Obviously, we know that the rates have not changed, but in order to have to run this particular ad, that could be various properties that have, where numerous properties throughout the county have not been affected necessarily by the assessment either.
Correct.
So I mean, it could go either way.
And we talked in our budget workshop a few weeks ago, the state does three different zones of reassessments. They do one zone every year. The zone this year was the eastern end of Allegheny County. Those assessments did rise about 11%. There could be some others in the county. They may actually see their assessments dip.
So basically, also, 2/3 of the county has not been assessed at this time either.
It was not reassessed, yeah. It's a three-year cycle for that by the state.
Thank you.
Jason, and who does the assessments?
State of Maryland does the assessments. So they send us all the information essentially contained in this ad. They do the entire assessment function. We've had a handful of people ask through this process, hey, what can I do if I don't like my assessment? There's a process to appeal to the State of Maryland to have the assessment adjusted. You guys, you know, you told us to hold the rates. We've done just that. So they have not moved from last year.
And where would someone, if they wish to appeal, where could they look for that, Jason?
They can go to the State Department of Assessments and Taxation website. We actually, there's a local office in every county, and there's forums listed on the website that people can fill out to formally appeal.
So Jason, if you live in, say, Barton, are you going to pay, is your tax rate going to be higher or lower next year?
It's actually going to be lower than last year. So everybody, except for the excluding towns, which is the top rate, those are people in unincorporated areas, everyone else's tax rate's actually going down this year.
How about Cumberland, higher or lower?
Lower.
How about Frostburg, higher or lower?
Lower.
How about Lonaconing, higher or lower?
Lower.
Luke?
Lower.
Lower. Midland?
Once again, lower.
Westernport?
And lower.
That's interesting.
Mount Savage.
Not a municipality.
They're excluding towns. They're not a municipality.
How about if you live in the county, higher or lower?
The same.
The same, okay. Interesting. All right. This is a public hearing. We have two people already signed up to speak. First is Mr. Larry Trinum.
Yeah, my first thing on the agenda is a little bit concerned on these abatement process that the county is doing.
We're just doing constant yield right now. You'll jump back up in a couple of minutes.
It relates to that, that raises people's taxes, which is disgusting about raising people's taxes.
Okay.
And then what do you do about getting ahold of Commissioners or people that's being employed by the county to contact somebody who don't appear to a county meeting?
Sir, you can always call the main line here and ask for any one of us to get through.
I have a building sitting in Lonaconing right now that, to me, is illegal abatement, and somebody needs to get on that, to have somebody return phone calls.
We certainly do that, but I would suggest we do the constant yield here first.
Yeah, we need to do the constant yield hearing on these tax rates. It's required by law.
I come back up and still say the same thing I'm stating now.
About abatement or whatever you want, yes.
Yeah, but it relates on to taxes, too.
Okay.
It wastes taxpayers, Allegheny County taxpayers. I'm a taxpayer in Allegheny County. I have two properties, and you're raising, you're considering raising taxes, and that's kind of wasteful taxes.
Well, we're not raising taxes. Your rate's going down in Lonaconing.
And I'll say, the abatement process actually doesn't add to the tax load. That's any cost borne from that or put into the property owner.
Okay.
Okay. Up next, we have Ms. Nancy Brandt.
Can I close this?
Sure.
Bill, I have several clippings here I want to show you. I'm going to show them first. State touts, Shade touts budget surplus. We got a downfall, a windfall of $4.2 million that we were not expecting. Some of it was because of COVID. And on the other hand, I'm going to explain to you why that chart over there is incorrect and why the tax rates went up even though they're saying it stayed the same. This has to go out to the public. Whenever there is a tax rate desire, there is what's called, well, first of all, the assessment, the property, the assessable property base went up $38 million, in other words, throughout Allegheny County. The state comes back and they say, this is the amount last year, and this is the amount this year. The second rate that the state gives us, to get your taxes, you're taking your assessment here and your rate here. You're multiplying those together, and that's going to tell you how much your taxes are. And what the county is trying to tell us, that the taxes are not going up even though they're increasing 1.7%. The constant yield is 9588. You should be taking 9588 times the value of your property to see how much your taxes are. The county is proposing that you move that constant rate up. That's the purpose of this whole thing, so that you can give input whether you want to pay extra taxes or not, whether you feel the county needs extra income or not. And I question, with the $4.2 million, I mean, I think that Mr. Shade said the county is stronger than ever, but we're here trying to get additional money even though some are saying that is not an increase. Why would you have 1.7 higher than the constant yield? If you're going to have the same income as last year, you're going to take this times this. This went up, the tax rate should come down. That's how you determine your taxes. And if it's increasing 1.7, your taxes are going up, and I believe we are drained of paying taxes. This 1.7% higher constant yield tax rate generates $373,000 in additional property tax revenue. And I don't know where the misunderstanding is between me and you all. You wouldn't have to do this if you're keeping a constant rate. The constant rate comes down to, the assessment, the constant yield comes down further than it was to yield you the same amount of taxes. But no, you're getting $373,000 additional property tax revenue. And I certainly call that, I call that a tax raise. I often come in here, and over the years, I keep a tally on how many times the county has kept the constant tax rate. And I believe in 2009, they kept the constant. No raise in taxes. And 2010, when Mike McKay was president of the Commissioners, no raise in taxes. But this really surprised me when I went through my file again. In 2013, they cut the rate below the constant yield. In 2013 and 2016, I have a file here, I mean, at my house. So I have a double whammy. My assessment went up, I was one of those 1/3, and the tax rate's going up. So that's why I'm here today, to say, don't give us more taxes. Don't give us more. We brag about that $4.2 million, and here we come. Give us more. Give us more. I searched online a good bit. I have a lot of stats here. I don't know how much time am I keeping to my file?
You have about one, two minutes left.
Two minutes. My husband out there, he's supposed to come in, and I use some of his minutes. A lot of headlines online. Allegheny County is the fastest shrinking county in Maryland with a 6.6 decline. Our population, since the last census, went down 7,000 people. Why? Taxes, taxes. We have federal, state, county, city, and that little hidden piggyback tax of 3%. And in Pennsylvania, they go over there, they do not have to pay taxes on their retirement. So why are we here? We're losing our people. Let me get my bearings here. We're closing the coal mines. We do not allow fracking. Friends of mine have moved away because they can't get their hunting gear that they need. We consolidate schools. We used to have two schools, now we have one. We used to have two hospitals, now we have one. Our census goes down year after year. Our county has 14.7 persons in poverty. If you're looking online, you can see. They have the poverty line and how many people are there. I'm a mayor on retiree. The board gave a coal raise, cost of living raise, and when I multiply, it's 1.234. When I multiply that out, I get an increase a month, I can get a gallon of gas, maybe. In summary, I challenge each and every one of you gentlemen to see if you can get together, cut spending, just like we do at home. Surely, you want to pick up tomorrow's paper the next day and say, the county commissioners held to the constant tax rate. We don't need to spend $373,000 more. We need elected representatives to remember that you disperse our money. The challenge stands, cut spending. And this type of advertisement, you got to change that. You got to change that. You know what I'm talking about?
I don't know. You don't like the picture?
No, it's not the picture. Here's never raised taxes. Jake wins for Western Maryland. Never raised taxes. Never will.
That's exactly right.
That's why we're having--
Garrett County can't say that. Cumberland can't say that. Frostburg can't say that. Washington County-- No, hold on, hold on.
We're having our meeting right now--
We are.
--so that we can raise taxes.
No, we're not. You can, do you have, do you have the sheet in front of you? Hold on.
The revenue will increase.
Current tax rate, .975.
That's the proposed.
No, that's current.
No, that's the proposed.
It's the proposed and the current.
The constant rate--
The constant yield is a rate set by the state. It's a formula that doesn't exist anywhere except in a state thing that we have to run.
It is the rate that you multiply times your assessment.
We've been very--
If the assessment comes up, the rate has to come down to the constant yield. It doesn't come up here or go higher.
We've been very fortunate to have growth and development, and when you put new buildings and properties on the tax rolls, the county receives more tax money. Just in Flintstone, that's over $100,000 in taxes a year we're getting from a solar farm. That's all new revenue. That was nothing. That didn't exist. The rate you're paying is exactly the same, .975.
That is the proposed rate. Tell me the constant yield rate.
Constant yield rates--
.9588. That is the amount. Now read this. "To fully offset the effect of increasing assessments, the real property tax rate should be reduced to .9588, the constant yield rate." I think you can't get any clearer than that. Taxes are going up. And Jason, I think there's a typo here. They, you say the tax rate, taxes are not going up. That's a typo. And what else do I know?
I would've said tax rates. Tax rates are not going up.
The tax rate right now is 9588, the constant yield tax rate.
Yeah, but that's not set by us.
That is the current, right here, right here. It's the current rate. I mean, I didn't write this. I don't know who wrote it.
The State of Maryland.
Huh?
State of Maryland.
State of Maryland, okay. Well, let's go with this, then. Forget what we say here. Forget here that the taxes are not going up because this isn't my first rodeo. So my challenge to you, get together and don't increase that, what is it, 373,000? Now, how hard is it for you to cut the budget that much? Come out and tell the public, we're keeping your taxes the same as last year. We're not going to increase. We're going to keep the constant rate. We know your assessment went up, but we have to keep this constant rate over here to equal the same amount of taxes. Otherwise, you are going to be paying more taxes or moving to another state or whatever. Whatever. Thank you.
All righty. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the constant yield? All righty. And gentlemen, I will add that the rates, the tax rates, if you live in a municipality, will be lower starting July 1, and if you live in the county, they'll be exactly the same. Now, we have heard a little bit about our $4.2 million surplus, and, you know, look, there's a couple of things that are to credit that. A lot of it is, we've been very cautious with how we spend money for a long time, and now we got the revenues catching up a huge increase in the amount of money people are earning in this county, more than ever. There's a tremendous amount of job growth. There's people moving to the area. And a lot of its income, well, it is, a lot of its income tax, new revenue. So with your all's permission, I'd like to have Administrator Bennett look into lowering the piggyback tax rate from 3.05 to 3%. It'd be about a $500,000 decrease in taxes to county residents. I think it'll be the first time in county history that that rate hasn't gone up. It's going down. I don't think they've ever decreased it since they put it in. So would you all be amenable to that?
Absolutely, sir.
Half a million dollars a year out of the budget? I sort of have an issue with that. But we'll be happy to entertain it and listen.
We'll take a look and get it for next meeting.
We'll bring Gorman back to you. Yeah, that would be a Code Home Rule bill, and I'll look at Lee a little bit here, but it will be a Code Home Rule bill to make that change. So we'll go ahead and do some research and get that back in front of you if that's what you guys want.
Great. Okay. With that, moving to our consent agenda tonight.
Commissioners, 13 items on your consent agenda tonight. Item three is Resolution 22-3, Fiscal Year 23, Cumberland Area Unified Planning Work Program. This is for the Commissioners acting as the Metropolitan Planning Organization to approve the Fiscal Year 23 work program. Item four is Allegheny County 2022 Priority Letter to the Maryland Department of Transportation. That would authorize you to sign and submit the letter to the Secretary. Item five is Georgia's Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Grinding System Bid Award. This would award to JWC Environmental in the amount of $67,190. Item six is the Solid Waste Management Board Appointment Membership Renewals, approving the appointment of Matthew Furman to serve as an alternate and to approve a two-year term and renew memberships for Woody Gatz and Dick Soterman. Item seven is the Maryland Arts and Entertainment District's redesignation to sign a letter acknowledging the income tax subtraction modification and to continue to be offered in the Arts and Entertainment District, as well as a continued provision for property tax credit and exemption from admission and amusements, and that would be in the city of Cumberland. Item eight is the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office, ARPA Plan Funding to allocate $67,802 from our ARPA stimulus funds for two true narc devices to assist Allegheny County Sheriff's Office in safety and identifying unidentified substances. Item nine is fitness equipment for the Maryland State Police Cumberland Barrack. This would be to supply fitness equipment in the amount of $13,387 from ARPA funding to be utilized by the troopers in the Maryland State Police Barrack to assist them in their new barrack. As you guys know, state didn't fund that stuff, and this is your guys' way of helping out a little bit. Item 10, Community Promotions, authorized $1,000 for the 2022 Old Town Summer Fest. Item 11, also Community Promotions, authorized $1,000 for the 2022 Thomas Cumberland Tri-State Wingoff to be hosted at the Allegheny County Fairgrounds. Item 12 is a request for tax abatement in the amount of $1,815.58 for two properties in Frostburg, 45 Orbin Street and 42 North Water Street. Item 13 is the purchase of a 2015 Jeep Cherokee to be used by the Sheriff's Office. It'll be purchased from Timbuk, Timbuk Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. Item 14 is Resolution 22-4, Amending the Rules and Regulations for Allegheny County Employees. And specifically, this will be to amend the job description for the Public Information Officer, which we're going to start to seek here soon. Item 15 is a request proposal for a new Department of Economic and Community Development Website redesign, and that'll be published on March 25, 2022.
Great. Gentlemen, any discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Administrator Bennett?
So I know you've heard enough from me, but two more letters for you to read into the record, if that's okay, for your support. First one, I'll do the short one first. This will be, "To whom it may concern," and this is going to David Trun's office. "The County Commissioners of Allegheny County, Maryland, extend their support for the application from the Barton Hose Company for a community project fund request through Congressman Trun. The Barton Hose Company provides exemplary service to the citizens and community of Barton, as well as in the surrounding areas in Allegheny and Garrett Counties. The Barton Volunteers work tirelessly, raising necessary funds to provide this service. However, with skyrocketing prices, traditional fundraising methods often come up short. The Board of Commissioners strongly supports this request as an effort to provide adequate and effective fire and rescue protection for Allegheny County. We thank you for your consideration of this project and encourage you to join us in our efforts to further support the residents of Allegheny County, Maryland." And it'll be signed by all three of you if you so choose.
Great, thank you.
And then if you're okay, while you're signing, I'll start on the next letter. So this letter is addressed to Andrew Orvizu, and he's the Acting Administrator of the Maryland Heritage Authority, and it reads, "I am writing to convey the support of the Board of Commissioners of Allegheny County for the Canal Place Preservation and Development Authority's application for a Fiscal Year 23 Management Grant and Block Grant from the Maryland Heritage Area's Authority. Canal Place utilizes the management grant not only to operate and maintain Canal Place and its properties and events, but also to administer and support initiatives in the passages of the Western Potomac Heritage Area. Examples of this year's initiative include: continuing to move forward with the River Park Canal Project, providing technical assistance to the existing and newly expanded heritage area; nurture existing partnerships and build new partnerships; encourage use of heritage tourism-related facilities within the heritage area; create additional physical and programmatic links between City of Frostburg and City of Cumberland; continue to develop appropriate recreational and special event facilities and programs, educate the public on historic preservation, encourage heritage tourism business opportunities through workforce development, adequately market the heritage area, working cooperatively with local heritage tourism organizations, advertise and administer block grants for heritage tourism-related projects, fulfill the reporting requirement of the MHAA. It is our hope that you will favorably consider this management grant and block grant request. If you have any questions or comments regarding our support, please do not hesitate to contact us." Once again, all three of you.
Great.
Signature.
Anything else, Mr. Bennett?
That is enough out of me tonight.
Okay. Attorney Beeman?
Nothing to add, sir. Thank you, sir.
There we go. Commissioner Caprally?
Um, I wanted to go back one last time to the budget. In some speculation swirling around regarding federal funds that we use to prop up our budget, and that we can state and show that that was not the case. Dollar for dollar, cent for cent, none of that was used, as was our right, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bennett, that we could have put it, some of it into our general fund.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it was not used towards any capital projects that were already assigned.
They were not.
So, you know, it's my understanding that there has been disagreement with that, and I would say anything to the contrary of that. It's, it's a lie. And, you know, I want, you know, us to be able to print the truth. If it, you know, something's going to be running in a newspaper, I would appreciate the chance to have a rebuttal to that, please. And the last time I think we had assessments up was, how many years?
The last two, the last true time they were up this much is probably going back to two thousand seven, two thousand and eight, before the last recession.
I would, I would just be cautious and have apprehension about punching a five-hundred-thousand-dollar, half-a-million-dollar hole, excuse me, five, five-hundred-thousand-dollar hole in our budget annually after this as well, you know. I thought that we wanted to maintain current rates, and that's what I'd like to stick by. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Brody?
Sir, I have nothing. I'm listening tonight, so.
Well, very good. We'll continue our budget session two weeks from today. We started with our outside agencies this afternoon, and, you know, a lot of these groups are facing what everyone's facing. You know, you see inflation from higher labor costs, higher fuel costs, and the county's seen that too. So, you know, the, the nice thing about this budget, unlike others, is we, we think we do have enough money, and, and we are very cautious of how we spend, and that's why there, there hasn't been a property tax increase. There's not going to be one, you know, in, in other counties and jurisdictions certainly can't say that. We do have two announcements tonight on, on what we are using some of our ARPA spending on. The first is Invest Allegheny Program. That's, that's redoing buildings on main streets throughout the county. We've had a tremendous amount of interest in that, and we're actually going to push the, the deadline for applications back to May sixth. It had been April first, and so people will have until May sixth to get their packet together. It's a dollar-for-dollar match. If you put it in, you know, you can get the money out of the, out of that program. And then finally, long time coming, we have our Connect Allegheny broadband funding. We'll be going live. I think it's, is it already on the website?
I think it's already on the website.
I think it's already on the website. So, how, how we did that was, we took a step back. We're not trying to micromanage. We have money available for the actual internet service providers themselves, and so they can apply for, for five-hundred-thousand of that money and, you know, submit your plan. How many people can you connect? Here's money to go do it. We also are doing, for the very first time, fifty thousand for actual individuals in streets. So, you know, maybe you and your neighbors, you need to get fiber laid or cable laid or something. It's going to be ten thousand dollars, one time only. You know, this is, this is money that's not going to be there again. We'll match fifty percent of that. So, all the details about that are, are going to be online, and, you know, we've, we've been making that a priority. And so, those are the kind of programs that you have, this, this ARPA stimulus spending. Those are the kind of things that you want to use it for. You don't want to just backfill the budget, and, and we haven't done that. We haven't put a dollar of that money into our general budget, so. Okay. With that, we do have a bunch of people signed up to speak this evening. Please, you have five minutes. Make sure you give your name, address, and we'll start there. First, we have Mr. Larry Trenum.
Larry Trenum, one-nine-one-one-four, South Rower Street, Barton, Maryland. I recently went through a case with a house I also owned in Lunica County, Nineteen Douglas Avenue. It's in up for an abatement. I think the county is wasting some, some money on abatement processes when I was working with this abatement to try to get the property cleaned up, but due into the fact that it's been tied up in the court because it was an arson case, and the county, Chris Gay, went ahead and employed a non, a non-contractor to go in on my property and go ahead and abate the property. I have a concern, but now, they're saying they're going to might take it a little further and tear the building down. As a taxpayer, not only one property I got, it's two. Does the county have the money to waste to just bring people in unlicensed and tear these buildings down?
Well, Mr. Trenum, a couple points. You indicated you were working with Mr. Gay.
Yes.
How long, how long had you been working with Mr. Gay prior to him sending someone in to abate the property?
On this particular property?
Uh-huh.
Um, I think we went to court back in September with this property. I started working with him in October, through a couple of months in the winter, and when the winter arrived, he said he was happy with what progress I made, and I told him with the winter here that I would continue it in the spring. And then, he called and said that he had to have it done ASAP, and I told him it was still in the process of circuit court up here, through a process of the person being charged for arson, that legally, being that's my ex-wife, I was only allowed to do so much to the property. But they went on, went and jumped the gun for the abate.
Mr. Trenum, I got to be honest with you. This is what the property looked like?
Yes.
He didn't jump the gun, sir.
Yes.
I can't believe he gave you six months.
Yes.
I, I can't believe he gave you that long.
Well, it was tied up in circuit court, you know. For the county to just jump the gun, I mean, does the county have that kind of money just to waste money?
Sir, 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 the way that junk abatements work, the county, the county's not spending a dollar. The cost of that abatement, you were, you were ordered abatement.
Exactly.
Back, hold on, hold on. You were ordered abatement back in October of two thousand eighteen. You were given thirty days to clean up the property. When you don't do that, county code provides that the county has the ability to come in and to abate the property, to clean up messes like this, so that your neighbors don't have to look at this. That was November. They gave you until March to take that, take that, to fix it. Those costs aren't coming back to the county. They're not being borne on the taxpayers. That cost is being added back on as a tax lien on that piece of property.
Exactly.
Yeah, the, the taxpayers aren't paying that, sir. You're, you're paying that.
But the county pre-pays it.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And we'll get our money back for it.
As me as a property owner, if I don't do that debt, the county occurs that whole debt.
Oh, no, sir. We'll, we'll, we'll be paid back for it. When the prop, when the, when the property is disposed of, and my understanding is, the property was sold at tax sale a couple of years ago, right? The certificate was sold?
Yes.
So, when the person that bought the, when the individual, that's, that's who's losing in this situation. The individual who bought this tax certificate is going to have to pay your cleanup bill before they can get that property.
You laughed about that. The guy that actually bought that, I've been in contact with, he's going to walk away from the property, so it follows back rate to where it started at.
The, the tax lien remains in place, sir, until the property is disposed of. At that point in time, whenever the property is sold, it doesn't get transferred until the county's lien is paid.
Okay. Well, just one other question. So, the county is okay bringing in unlicensed, uninsured contractors?
They're hauling, they're hauling junk off the property, sir. They're not, they're not building things. They're not, they're not contractors that are building things. They're hauling junk off the property. They're cleaning this up.
And tearing down.
What are they tearing down?
There's buildings there that were tore down. Do you have any of the pictures?
What buildings were torn down, sir?
There was a camper tore down. There was trees disposed of, cut down, near dwellings. You only have two of the pictures.
All right, I think I have all the pictures, but... The, the building wasn't, there, there was a camper on the property?
Exactly.
A tree had fallen into?
Yes, overhanging another dwelling on a different property.
And it's your, it's your assertion that the, the guy who cut the tree down wasn't licensed?
No, he was not licensed. I have a business card. I spoke with him.
Well, I, I'm not, I'm not a fan of unlicensed contractors being used for, for, for construction business, but to, to be honest with you, again, I, I can't believe that Mr. Gay let that go for six months. That needed addressed back in November.
Well, when you have stuff tied up in circuit court, you know.
I don't, I don't understand what was, I don't understand what was tied up, sir. Well, when you say the property was tied up, you've owned the property the whole time, correct?
Me and my wife went through a divorce.
Okay.
I had a protective order only allowing me to certain parts of the property. You only have certain evidences of what's going on with this case.
Okay.
All right. I, I think that's probably as far as we're going to be able to get tonight.
Yeah, that's the word we can go with it, because I ain't going to get nowhere with it.
Okay. All righty. Up next, we have Mr. Ed Taylor.
Commissioners, for the record, my name is Edward Taylor, four hundred South Allegheny Street, Cumberland, Maryland, is my address. A few months ago, I stood here as president of the Cumberland Historic Cemetery Organization with a concern over what used to be called Allegheny County's Annual Festival Heritage Days. It's a longtime festival. It's been held for well over fifty years, and we've been part of it for almost forty. And when I say we, that's the Cumberland Historic Cemetery Organization. Years ago, the county tourism director, Josephine Biden, ran the festival, and it was a huge success. If you wanted a hotel or motel room in Allegheny County, you better have it booked at least two months in advance. Last year's festival, two of our members called every hotel in Allegheny and Mineral County nearby. More than half the hotels and motels didn't even know there was a festival being held, and there were vacancies in every single facility. But all that aside, I'm here tonight with Peggy King, who is the regent for the Daughters of the American Revolution, a longstanding historical organization, much older than ours, and she'll tell you a little bit about that. But our main issue is with Mr. Dave Williams, who is president of the Allegheny County Historical Society. He has run this festival, and he ran it last year, and what we are asking, if the commissioners would write Mr. Williams a letter and address it to two-eighteen Washington Street, which is the office and the headquarters of the Allegheny County Historical Society, and ask them if they would kindly place Commissioner Dave Caprally, which I've spoke to him privately multiple times about, and City Councilman Eugene Frazier, which we're trying to get the city to do that, and a member of, one member of every organization that chooses to be part of the festival on the committee to run the festival. Currently, it is being run all by Dave Williams and a few folks at Emmanuel Episcopal Church. This is Joe Biden, when she was the county tourism director, the festival was called a Something for Everyone Festival. It's no longer that. Only certain groups of Dave's choosing have been chosen to run the festival and take part in it. They receive state funding, city funding. I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think they get too much county funding. But it is a...
They don't think any...
They're not getting any now. But anyhow, it, it is a county festival, that it's a longstanding-type thing. I'm very experienced with this festival. I'm soon fifty-nine. I've been dealing with it since I was nineteen, and the more you have in any historic festival for tourism, the more people you will bring in. In my words, the festival has been completely hijacked by the Allegheny County Historical Society, and this is more of a city issue than it is a county issue, but what we are here tonight is to mainly ask you all to ask Dave Williams to place Commissioner Caprally as a board member or a committee member, whatever they want to call it, on the steering committee, and a member of every other historical group in the county. This is more than just a city. This is, many of these folks live within the county that want to be part of this thing to make Allegheny County tourism more successful than what it is. I've been very involved in tourism over the many decades, and it is not up to running the way it should be. It could be so much more at little to no cost if we would get the personalities aside. And as I said, this is the second time I've been at this meeting on this particular issue. I hope it'll be the last, and Peggy King will fill you in on the problems they, they've had, the same very problems that we have had, so.
Ed, real quick, the restructuring, have you, have you asked the city? I mean, we couldn't ask to realign a, a festival that's not ours. I mean, for us to participate, we would have to...
Yeah, I've been to the city meeting twice on this. I intended to, after this, go back to them a third time.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
And Eugene Frazier is in favor of being on this committee also.
Okay.
We've talked at length about this. Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Oh, I do, yeah.
You know?
Right, right. Yeah, it's more of a city thing, but, you know, there's county organizations, they're being left, a lot of people are being left out of this thing.
Okay.
And, and the main fact is, it's being held on public property. If it was held at two-eighteen Washington Street or Emmanuel Episcopal Church, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I wouldn't be here. But this is a public festival. We, for thirty-nine years, have, that's how we started our organization, by giving tours of our monuments on historic graves in St. Peter and Paul and Resil Cemetery on Fayette Street, and we've done that every year, so. And we want to be more of a part of it, because we're being, groups like ours are being totally excluded from it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Commissioners, that work for you?
Yeah, yes, that's fine.
Okay.
I was just making sure that he was having the city take the lead on that particular request.
Okay. Up next, we have Ms. Peggy King.
Greetings. I fully support everything that, that Ed Taylor just told you all. I wanted to tell you a little bit about the DAR before I go into our problems, because a lot of people don't know what the DAR is, other than a bunch of old ladies with a lot of pins on their chest. So, I wanted to tell you exactly what we were. The Daughters of the American Revolution was founded in August ninth, eighteen ninety. The founding members were Ms. Eugenia Washington, Ms. Mary Desha, Mrs. Ellen Walworth, and Mary Lockwood. Also there, but she had a meeting, was the president's wife, Mrs. Harrison. The threefold purpose of the, the National DAR is exactly the same now as when the society was organized in eighteen ninety, to wit, historical, educational, and patriotic. Historical, to perpetuate the memory and spirit of the men and women who achieved American independence. Educational, to promote as an object of primary importance institutions for the general diffusion of knowledge. And patriotic, to cherish, maintain, and extend the institutions of American freedom, to foster true patriotism and love of country. We do have the DAR Constitution Hall, which has a lot of concerts, so. The George Washington Headquarters were built by General Braddock's men, pardon me, for George Washington, and to date, all similar headquarters in the United States. They predated all similar headquarters in the entire United States. Here, Washington acquired the military training, which distinguished him as the preeminently great American soldier. The Crescent Chapter DAR operates, furnishes, and maintains the headquarters, and chapter members serve as docents. We have a chairman for the house, who is lead docent, educating and supervising the other docents. She makes sure the cabin is cleaned and ready for presentations. The City of Cumberland gave the Crescent DAR the privilege of keeping the house maintained inside when it was given to the city in nineteen twenty-one. The city makes any repairs to the house and has a budget for this. So, that house's been taken care of by us since nineteen twenty-one, and there's a plaque down there, but for lack of time, I, I cut it short. We have been a part of the Heritage Days Festival since its conception. We were very disappointed last year when we were left out of participation through lack of inclusion in advertisements and signage. There was one mention of the house in one of the pamphlets in the last paragraph. We, again, this year, feel we are also being left out. As with last year's event, we will still have the cabin open with our docents manning it, so that the public has the opportunity to see this very historic building. There were no signs, there were, there was no, if you saw the picture in the newspaper of where the festival was going to be taking place and the different locations that were on that map, the cabin disappeared. It wasn't on the map. We all, of course, the DAR was monitoring everything that we could read. The only time I ever saw anything about the cabin was when I went through the train, the new engine, and the gentleman over there handed me one of their pamphlets, and at the very last paragraph, there was some mention of the cabin. The actor last year, George Washington, he never visited our headquarters, to our knowledge, because we were down there when we were manning it. He never came to see the inside of his cabin. It was his cabin. So, and we wondered why this was occurring, but, you know, Mr. Williams met with us pre-COVID and wanted to move the cabin up to Prospect Square. We adamantly were against it. There was no parking up there, and we have a lot of people that are either challenged in walking. They couldn't walk up that hill, walk around that hill, because parking would have been down Washington Street. After that, Mr. Williams showed me, when he was kind of courting us, he showed me the, the house, the, who's that man that traveled the world? The Whiting House. Showed me the Whiting House and told me how maybe the DAR would like to, to meet there and be docents. I didn't hear anything more from him, and we objected to the fact that we didn't want to move the house. You know, we didn't want the house moved. Everybody knows of it as being Riverside Park. In fact, that was where it was moved, when it was originally put back into being the house, because it had been, been moved to a farm. It sat up in the fort for eighty-nine years, and then it was moved to a farm, and then it was moved back, and that was in nineteen twenty, I think it was moved back. Yes, it stayed, it stayed up at the fort for eighty-nine years. It was moved in eighteen forty-four out to somebody's farm and taken apart, and then it was put back together, and some people were living in it, actually. They used it as a house. And then, in nineteen twenty-one, it was moved to Riverside Park. And then, in, uh, 1921, it was moved to Riverside Park by James Walter Thomas, a local attorney and historian. The property was owned by the City of Cumberland. Mr. Thomas, wanting to make sure that the cabin, pardon my voice, this is a reflection of, uh, COVID that I had in January, um, wanting to make sure that the cabin would not be forgotten and left to decay, he gave the city the cabin and moved it to the new location. But then, as I, I already told you, the city gave it to the DAR to take care of. Now, we haven't heard from Mr. Williams since then, but it was real noticeable when we were left out of the Heritage Days last year. So, I can only think it's because we, uh, we were a roadblock. We haven't heard from him for, since all that went down about the cabin, uh, being moved. Uh, and we're very happy with the cabin where it is. We get lots of visitors. Of course, we do have the people that are over to the side, but we talked to Mrs. Rogers, uh, the new, new person, uh, downtown that, that is helping us with the cabin. And we all came together with some ideas that might deter the people from camping out near that cabin, if you've been down there. I don't know if any of you all have visited the cabin with our head docent. Has anybody gone down there to hear the spiel that we give on the cabin? I invite you, uh, anybody in the audience? You have?
I can.
I wish you would share your, uh, your thoughts on the, the, the thing that we give out when we're down there. We have all kinds of little artifacts in the cabin, and, uh, our lead docent is excellent. She has like a six-page thing that we're supposed to study before we go down there to be a docent. So, and it's typed written in, uh, I think, Pica 6, you know, uh, single spaced.
Lot of details. Well, thank you so much, and we will certainly be in touch.
I am here to support his, his, uh, thoughts on having that, the, the group. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Okay. Up next, we have Ms. Michelle Miller.
Hi, I'm Michelle. I live at 11305 Feather Bed Lane in Corbinville. Um, I just, first, I want to thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm a very good public speaker, so bear with me.
Go ahead.
I'm calling, or talking about, uh, the property that's adjacent to us. The person that lived there has passed away, and I'm not sure if it's through the estate process or it's still going through. And they're turning this property into a place to dump and then burn debris, garbage. And the first time, we kind of thought we'd let it go, because we thought maybe they were cleaning out. We didn't say anything, and then they began to bring in other debris. I called the code enforcement. I called and spoke with a Mr. Gray, I believe his name was.
Chris Gaye?
Gaye.
Potentially?
Yes, that was his name, I'm sorry. And that was probably a month and a half, two months ago, and he informed me that the position was open, they had somebody, and it fell through, and they were going to advertise that. So I was like, okay, I'll give it some time. A week or so later, they burnt that pile of debris. Um, I thought, okay, somebody spoke to him, it's handled. And again, they started bringing more debris in. It's not debris from their property, they are actually bringing it into the property. So, uh, my husband has taken pictures. I then, um, a week and a half ago, a week ago, I called in to speak with the code, the code enforcer, whoever that would be. And again, I was told the same thing. The position wasn't filled, same exact story. And I didn't see where it had been posted at any game, point in time. So, I thought, okay. I then... It frustrates me, because I see this whenever I look out my front window, this heaving pile of trash.
Ma'am, well, you, you, yeah, you came to the right place. Can you get with Attorney Beeman after the meeting?
Yeah.
And, and we can either email him the photos, or we'll get together with you.
11305 Feather Bed Lane. Yeah, sure, that's no problem. I appreciate your time.
And ma'am, just so you know, too, we do have, if they haven't posted just yet, we have another series of ads out for the code enforcement. We tried to fill it a couple of months back, and to be completely honest, didn't get any qualified applicants to fill the role, so we're trying again. In the meantime, Chris is sort of filling in the pieces for us while he's doing another job for us.
Yeah, he took all my information.
Yeah.
I've been the lady that I spoke to the other day.
But we'll, we'll definitely keep at it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Keisha Coleman, John Brant.
My name's Keisha Coleman, 15700 Hornick Road, Frostburg, Maryland, 21532. I'm here tonight because I just want to make it public knowledge. I've emailed all the commissioners, and I've talked to Mr. Bennett. I've applied for a job here at the county for about five years to be a utilities trainee and maybe once or twice a year, some, at some point, because they took a list, and I wasn't on the list, and then I had to be placed on the list. This is a job I've, I've been pursuing, because this is what I like to do. And I have been given two interviews, um, and never really received the job. My question is, is that I have all the qualifications. I believe I have all the qualifications. I didn't bring my resume or nothing with me, because I just did this on the spur of the moment. I just want to know what I can do as a woman, and I, I don't want to just throw that out there, because I'm not just a woman, but I am a qualified woman to do this job. And I don't believe there's any woman in this department that does the utilities trainee. My understanding is, it's an entry level, so I can't see somebody being more qualified if it's entry. Everything that's on the qualifications, I have done, whether it's one time or 100. I'm sure if one person drove a truck or cut a tree down one time, it's still the same thing as 100 times. I've done it all, and I just want to know from somebody where I can go to from here to accept this job. And, um, I do want to say that I did turn down a job in the 911 system prior to this last listing, and that was because I saw this job advertised. And the way I am, I think I am not going to go through seven weeks of training and disappoint somebody thinking I'm going to keep that job when this is the real job that I wanted. So, I just would, you know, like for you guys to acknowledge that I did come publicly about this, and maybe with the next opening, um, consider me for this position, or tell me what I can do better to be more desirable for this job.
I guess, Keisha, you and I talked yesterday, and just, just like I said, keep, keep applying. That's a very sought-after job.
I know it is.
To be completely honest.
I'm 51 years old. I'm hoping, like, to be able to retire from this county, and like you said, I mean, people is trying to move in, and they're trying to get higher, higher paying jobs, and that's what my position is with this job. The other job I was offered was $16 an hour. This starts out at $21 dollars an hour with a lot more benefits. So you can see where my position is of turning down a job, thinking, last time they hired three people, I thought, well, surely enough, I've been qualified to do a position where they're hiring, hiring three people. This time, they said, I didn't even get an interview, because I turned that job down. And, uh, to me, I would have, they should have had an interview and said, why did you turn the job down, instead of just not even interviewing me at all? So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Brant, 15708 Hornick Road, Frostburg, Maryland. My neighbor, my daughter. Now, we've been walking a long, long time. And five years, I've heard so many times she's applied for this job. I know she's qualified, because the county sent her letters stating that she was qualified for this job. Now, they've hired eight men since she's applied for this job. I know, Jason, you say, keep applying. How many times has she got to apply? She's applied for that job, but numerous jobs in the county have been overlooked. And sometimes I think it's kind of like it's who you know in this county. So I'm just here to, to say that I know the girl. I know she's a hard worker. Matter of fact, when I drove past Coney though the other day, there was seven county workers standing around leaning up against a truck for an hour. That girl wouldn't be standing there, she'd be doing something. She's a hardworking girl, and I don't like it being overlooked. And you know, there's also a thing called equal opportunity by the law. So you might want to think about this, all of yous. This is not right. I listened to her for five years applying for this job, and it kind of is not right. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will go on record for something here, because I also had a son that applied for several jobs at the county that was actually combat wounded, US Marine, and did not get any of them. So if it, for me to help...
Eight?
Four. So, and they was all entry level positions and wasn't even considered. So, I don't know what to say. I'm much the one that can help you, because if, if I would say that she was a good worker, I guarantee you she'd go to the back of the line, so...
You said you was a good helper, so don't sit there and say you didn't. You told her you were a helper, helper out of this job. I don't say you didn't.
I did, Johnny.
I appreciate you drawing on us.
Yes, sir.
So, our next public business meeting will be Thursday, April 7th, 5 o'clock. We do have a budget hearing for outside agencies, uh, April 7th, 1 o'clock in this room. Thank you.